Counselors, time has arrived for May 22, 2017, 8:00 PM. City Council, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, just a couple pieces of information before we go into the agenda tonight. I did speak to Mark Lindy of Brockton Cable Access. Unfortunately, they're having some issues, so this is being taped. It will not be live tonight, but it will be taped. I did reiterate to Mr. Lindy that we do have the upcoming budget hearings, and I would expect that those would be live, and he's going to do his due diligence to try to make that a reality. Another piece of information, Counselors, because the Finance Committee of last Monday, the 15th, was canceled. I am scheduling one for next Tuesday, Monday being the holiday. Tuesday, the 30th of May, here in the chamber, 7:00 PM, we'll have a Finance Committee meeting. It will be the agenda from the 15th and the items that are referred this evening, so it'll be a pretty lengthy agenda that night. But again, it's next Tuesday night, if you could put that in your calendars. With that being said, Counselor Borogod.
Yes, if I could have a moment of personal privilege, Mr. President?
Absolutely. Yes, Counselor.
I have a citation here for someone that's been involved with the project, you know, his own time, his own funds, et cetera, for 10 years now. And his name is Richie Hearn, so I'd like him to come up here, present this. We have a lot of great people in the city, do a whole lot of great things, but Richard Hearn came along and wanted to teach kids about coins, and that got them learning about math and history and geography. And the amazing thing is, kids came along, but a whole lot of adults did. And they started this at the West Branch, and now it's at the Brockton Main Library, and he has about over 100 people show up every year. So this is a citation from the city counselors for your recognition for 10 years of successful National Coin Week events, teaching young and old history, geography, and mathematics through coins and paper and money. And be it further known that the city council extends best wishes for continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the president of the council and attested to and copy thereof transmitted to the clerk of the council. So anyway, can't thank you enough. All right, you do. So people realize, and he has plans already for next year, already reserved the room, et cetera, but you know, people need to realize that people come from different parts of New England to see this event, and it's been unbelievable, the turnaround, the speakers, and the periodicals go out to even Canada, and people recognize what goes on here in Brockton. So anyway, kudos to that. Thanks again.
Thank you. Mr. Hearn, thank you. And also, people may not know, you're a distinguished veteran and also a retired ironworker, so thank you for all that you do for the city of Brockton as well.
Thank you, City Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, if we could go into Agenda Item Number One, please.
The acceptance of the minutes of the May 8, 2017 council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Appointment of Marlene Amity of 27 Herod Ave, Brockton, to the cultural council for a six-year term.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Reappointment of David Lynch, 30 Quincy Street, Brockton, as a constable in the city of Brockton for a term of three years.
Refer to Finance Committee.
The appointment of Frederick McDermott, 976 Ash Street, Brockton, to the Board of Election Commissions to replace William Pribyszkowski for a four-year term.
That too, Counselors, refer to Finance.
We have a petition on behalf of the Joint Bingo Committee Congregations of Temple Betheluna and Temple Betham requesting the city council approve to jointly conduct a weekly bingo game within the city on Wednesday nights at the Shaw Center.
Counselors, all in favor of granting this petition, please raise your hand. All opposed, petition is hereby granted.
Okay.
Petition of A.R. Westgate Lanes LLC DBA Westgate Lanes for 13 billiard tables and 62 bowling alleys licensed located at 65 Westgate Drive, Brockton.
Time hasn't arrived, I'd like to clear the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, please come forward to the podium and state your name. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. My name is Francine Kaiser. I am the, now going to be the manager of Westgate Lanes. We're in the process of the sale, should be done by the end of June.
Excellent.
Harry Junior said that he wishes he could've came, but they have a busy night there tonight, so he did not come with me.
Okay. Counselors, any questions?
Just...
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. So the Minassians are selling the business to you?
Yes, the Minassians. Harry Junior's ready to retire. He's going to stay on with us part-time. He's selling to me and my partner. We've had backgrounds since '03 in bowling. Everything's going to stay the same, the name, everything. Just going to put some improvements into it, into the pub, and keep it running, that's all.
Well, I hope you do as good a job running it as the Minassian family has for all these many years, and they've been great neighbors too and great members of the Brockton community, so hopefully you'll, good luck on it, but hopefully you'll be as good a neighbor and as good a business owner as the Minassian family has.
Absolutely, I got some big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other questions, Counselors? Anyone else here in favor? Anyone else here in favor, third and final, anyone here in favor that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone here in opposition? Anyone in the chamber in opposition, third and final, anyone in opposition? Part of the hearing is closed. We're going to entertain a motion now relative to if we're going to grant the petition. All in favor? All opposed, it carries, petition is hereby granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Petition of Mass Electric Company and National Grid requesting permission to install a new pole, number one Falmouth Ave, in support of the new apartment building at 20 West Rosetta Street.
Time hasn't arrived, I'd like to clear the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, relative to this matter, anyone here in favor? Anyone here from Mass Electric, National Grid? Counsel, I'm going to entertain a motion, maybe we can put this off a little bit later in the agenda. Anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion made properly seconded. We're going to put that, we're just going to postpone it to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if...
Make a motion on number eight also.
Okay.
Anyone here, before we open, anyone here from Horizon?
Verizon.
None? Okay. Counselors, a motion made for eight?
Second.
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10 as well, Counselors. It doesn't look like anybody from Utilities, so seven, eight, nine, 10, motions been made to postpone those to the end of the agenda. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Number 11.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Counselor.
A moment of clarification, if you don't mind. Why didn't we have a hearing on number five? Why do we go straight to motion to petition, to grant the petition?
Well, Counselor, I discussed it with legal counsel. We don't need to, since it's already an existing matter. The only, the only change in venue is the fact that Temple Betheluna is no longer Temple Betheluna, City of Brockton. They merged, well, tentatively merged with Randolph, that's not going to happen now, they're going to go to Eastern, but they want to use the City of Brockton Shaw Center.
Okay.
So that was the only reason.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Counselor. Seven, eight, nine, and 10 have been pushed off to the end, we're going to go on to 11.
Report of the Audit Committee for its meeting of May 9, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Treasury Collector requesting a transfer of $75,000 from the Treasury's debt interest short-term notes to Treasury's Medicare tax. This transfer is necessary to cover the expected shortfall due to budget cuts and unanticipated overtime through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Accepted and placed on file.
The mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication for the Director of Animal Controls requesting that a donation be accepted by the council to help animals and their owners with the city of Brockton from Jeffrey J. Donahue Jr.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the DPW Commissioner authorizing Onyx Development Group, LLC DBA Onyx Renewable Partners, LP Onyx to act as Brockton's agent to correspond and coordinate with National Grid on matters related to interconnections, application, and study of the solar project located at Thatcher Street landfill as permitted in Mass State standardized interconnection requirements.
That's accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting that the city council transfers $26,000 into the sewer overtime in order to cover the projected overtime expenses and emergencies for the remainder of the year. The Sewer Division would like to transfer $17,000 from separation costs and $9,000 from CDL stipend to sewer personnel services overtime.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the re-establishment of a revolving fund for fiscal 2018 from the cash receipts from Comcast and such expenditures not to exceed $750,000.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have communication from the Assistant City Auditor certifying that the balance of the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation as of May 15, 2017 is $592,801.95.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of the Fire Department requesting a transfer of $21,299.30 from ambulance receipts to fire department, other contract services, in order to dispatch fire EMS responders from the fire station in contracted ambulance sites.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Director of Animal Controls requesting $4,000 to be transferred from full-time salaries into overtime to cover overtime expenditures through the remainder of the fiscal year. As of this date, only $1,947.15 remains in the line item.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Counselors, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police requesting the following transfer of $250,000 be approved for Police Department fiscal 17 budget from personal services other than overtime to Police Personal Services overtime. The transfer is necessary to cover overtime expenditures as a result of vacancies. This appropriation comes from the surplus in the Personnel Service account due to vacancies.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Building Department requesting reauthorization of the revolving funds for the fiscal 18 vacant and abandoned buildings account.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Executive Director of the Brockton Park Authority requesting reauthorization of the Park and Authority revolving fund to receive revenues from parking violation fines up to and including the amount of $250,000. Said funds to be expended by the Park and Authority to pay expenses of parking regulation enforcement for fiscal year 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO, or from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chairman of the Board of Assessors stating that the estimated taxes for Trinity Brockton MAP ID 109-009 property upon the completion of Phase Two would be $192,500. The estimated taxes are based upon 111 residential apartment units being constructed with 65 of the units being market rate units and 46 affordable rate units. The estimated taxes are based upon the current fiscal 2017 assessment of 50th Century Unit A and 50th Century Unit B.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending that the city council adopt a three-part loan and appropriation for $2 million as assessed, as suggested by the city's bond council at Locklaw LLC in order to provide the financing for the city's share of the cost to develop a new parking garage and make street and traffic improvements within the development district approved by the city council. Said project being undertaken with the participation of the Commonwealth, Trinity Financial, and the Brockton Redevelopment Authority.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO in accordance with Section 5 of Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990 certifying the appropriation of and borrowing authority for $2 million for the purposes of paying the city's share of the cost of developing a new parking garage and street traffic improvements in a development district in association with the Commonwealth, the Brockton Redevelopment Authority, and Trinity Financial. The expected annual increase in property tax revenue to the district from the project is $192,500 greater than the anticipated debt services per year as indicated by the Chairman of the Board of Assessors on March 9, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an ordinance approving the extension of existing cemetery land to be dedicated to cemetery use located at East Street and Thatcher Street pursuant to Mass General Laws 114, Section 34, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows: "The land between East Street and Thatcher Street, including the existing cemetery of the poor sisters of Jesus crucified and the sorrowful mothers, that is favorable as amended, and that is an order."
And the question now is on the amendment to make it an order. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? And with that being an order, we're going to act on that this evening. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
The order is adopted.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Advised Audiences of the City of Brockton, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. Article 5, Department, Division 7, Department of Personnel, is hereby amended by adding certain requirements relative to hiring and promotions. That recommendation is favorable as amended.
Counselors, the question's on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed, the amendment carries. Questions on passage to a third reading as amended by a hand vote. Third reading as amended? Opposed? Carries. Third reading as amended.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the Advised Audiences of the City of Brockton, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. Chapter 8, garbage and trash, is hereby amended as follows. Section 8-3, Part 1, definition, favorable as amended.
Counselors, questions on the amendments? All in favor of the amendments? All opposed? Questions on passage to a third reading as amended by a hand vote? All in favor of third reading as amended? Opposed? Carries. Third reading as amended.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2 of Advised Audiences, Section 11-211, hereby amended by adding a limit on the number of licenses. Favorable recommendation.
Is there an amendment on that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, there is.
Counselors, questions on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Questions on passage to a third reading as amended? Opposed? It's passed to a third reading as amended.
Order that the sum of $2 million appropriated to pay costs of developing a parking garage and for making street traffic improvements within the development district approved by the city and being undertaken in conjunction with Trinity Financial, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 42, District Improvement Finance Statute, Mass General Law is Chapter 44, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city, although such bonds or notes shall be payable in the first instance for property tax revenue expected to be derived from the new development with the new development syst, uh, district. The amount authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this order shall be expended in addition to all amounts received by the city from the Commonwealth of Mass and from Trinity Financial to pay cost of the project.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Order any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may apply, be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Order that the city treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Mass Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws any and all bonds or notes of the city authorized by this vote, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board of the Commonwealth of Mass may require.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Order that pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, city council authorizes the re-establishment of revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 for the reauthorization of the Park and Authority revolving fund to receive revenues from parking violation fines up to and including the amount of $250,000.
Refer to Finance Committee.
That pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, city council authorizes the re-establishment of revolving fund for fiscal 2018 from the cash receipts from Comcast, such expenditures not to exceed $750,000.
Refer to the Committee on Finance.
Order that the Brockton City Council act on behalf of the city of Brockton to hereby accept a grant and permanent easement for electrical equipment for National Grid. Mass Corporation would use the place of business in all fair mass, which is located south west side of Thatcher Street, originated from Paul P. 42, which is located at the nautilus of Thatcher Street. Now that was in her.
Counselors, that's going to be referred to the Finance Committee in planning.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor Steninski.
Thank you very much. Due to the fact that the solar mountain is almost done, 90% done, this is a hookup to interconnect, to get the data from that mountain that's going into the Edison. I would like to have this go tonight under suspension of rules, so if they can move forward and get that done right away.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded to Act on 53 tonight under suspension of rules. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We're going to act on the suspension of the rules. Question comes before us now by a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Orders hereby ordained.
Order that the city hereby accepts as a grant and gift from Jeffrey J. Donahue Jr. of Four Dog Houses pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A, one-half, donated to four residents of the city as deemed necessary by the Brockton Animal Control Department. The mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such gift.
Let's refer to the Finance Committee, Counselors. Counselor?
I'd like to move suspension of the rules on this, so that they can...
Actually, Counselor, the gentleman, the gentleman wanted to come here next week, the young boy that did this. I spoke to Mr. DeChellis, he'd like to come here. It's a pretty big thing for him.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It is referred to Finance Committee, Counselors, 54.
Order that pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, city council authorizes the re-establishment of a revolving fund for fiscal 2018 for sole purpose of funding the creation and maintenance of the abandoned building registry, as well as the closing and boarding up of vacant and abandoned buildings, provided that no more than $250,000 may be so expended for the fund during fiscal 2018.
Refer to Finance Committee.
We have an appropriation of $21,299.30 from ambulance receipts, the fire department, other contract services, in order to dispatch fire and EMS responders from the fire station in contracted ambulance sites.
Refer to Finance Committee.
We have an appropriation of $75,000 from Treasury's debt interest short-term notes to Treasury's Medicare tax in order to cover the expected shortfall due to budget cuts and unanticipated overtime for the remainder of the fiscal year.
That too is referred to Finance Committee.
We have an appropriation of $26,000 from DPW sewer separation costs, $17,000, DPW sewer, D.D., uh, CDL stipend $9,000 to Department of Double Quirk, strike there, to, for the DPW sewer overtime in order to cover the projected overtime expenses and emergencies for the remainder of the year.
Counselor Ian Eary.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, Mr. President, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and act on this this evening. I think time is essence, and we're going into summer session. Anyone has any questions, the DPW Commissioner's here, but I'd like to make that...
Second.
Motion, is on the motion, Counsel Barnes?
Uh, yes, I guess, I just have a question for Mr. Rowley.
There's a motion, it's been properly seconded, act on this under suspension of rules. All in favor? All opposed? We're going to act on it. Mr. Commissioner, if you could come forward. Good evening, how are you, Larry?
Good, thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. Counsel Barnes.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Rowley. So I just have a question. So the funding will go to the CDL stipend, is that for a particular person or just for the department for licenses, or how is that?
That is, that's for all the personnel that has their CDLs.
Okay, and how many, how many folks is that?
Well, part of the sewer department, it's probably roughly 25.
Okay, okay, all right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other question? Counsel Cruz.
Just so I understand, this money's coming out of, this is extra money in your CDL stipend account?
Extra money, yes.
And we're moving it to the overtime?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, yeah, just one more. So is the license expiring? So, is the license expiring or how, is this just to renew?
The CDL stipend, that's all contractual, Counselor.
Okay.
So, we have to pay every individual that holds a CDL. We have to pay them.
Okay, I, okay, I get it.
Just a little extra money I could take from that line item, another line item, to put it into overtime.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, I'm all set.
Any other counselors have a question for Mr. Rowley? Seeing now an appropriation now comes before us on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, kindly read the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Appropriation passes.
An appropriation of $4,000 from animal control full-time salaries to animal control overtime, in order to cover overtime expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year.
That is referred to Finance Committee, Counselors.
Move suspension of the rules so we may act on this tonight.
On 59?
Uh, yes, on 59 for animal control.
Okay. I withdraw my, I withdraw my refer to Finance. Motion on the floor, Act on the Suspension Rules is properly seconded. All in favor? All opposed? It's going to pass. We're going to take a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, if you could kindly read the roll.
Izak.
Yes.
Yes.
Overgaud.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ineri.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan. Yes. Appropriation hereby passes, Counselors.
An appropriation of $250,000 from personal services other than overtime, the police personal services overtime, in order to cover overtime expenditures. This appropriation comes from surplus in a personal service count due to vacancies.
Counselor Stedenski.
Mr. President, during the late time of the fiscal year, uh, the amount of money that's been spent and the fact that this is within the budget at the police department, I'd like to act on the suspension of the rules. Chief Crowley is here, if anybody does-
Second.
Second.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor, properly seconded, Act on the Suspension, uh, and act on it tonight. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, and the chief is here. Chief, if you could come forward, please. Good evening, Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Counselor.
Counselors, any questions for Chief Crowley? Counselor Monahan?
Yes, good evening, Chief Crowley. Is there a chance that we could get some, uh, walking beats back downtown if we approve this tonight?
I believe so, yes. I can't guarantee after July 1st, but this money will get us some walking beats prior to July 1st.
So, when would, when would they be starting?
If it passes tonight, I can speak with Lieutenant Barry tomorrow and set it up for as soon as they're available.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Farwell.
Yes, I'm not going to oppose this tonight, Counselors, but I do want to go through just a quick summary of where we are with overtime for FY 2017. As you may remember, we reduced the overtime appropriation by $250,000. That left $770,552 remaining. The Police Public Safety Initiative had $244,600. We had $75,500 for licensing enforcement overtime. Subsequently, we approved $150,000 on January 9th from the stabilization fund, and we received an executive office of public safety grant in the amount of $100,000, which totals With this $250,000 tonight, we will have appropriated $1,590,652. Now, that does not include overtime that may have come from the Shannon Grant and another EOPS 911 grant, uh, and when we received those orders, it was mentioned specifically that some of those funds, I don't know how much, but some of those funds would go to overtime. So, I guess my point is, having come from the police department, uh, we need to have a healthy discussion during the budget process about police overtime. We have a great department. You know I have great affection for them. I remember when Chief Crowley came on the job. I had been there a few years. Something needs to change. We, we cannot continue to appropriate this kind of money for overtime without looking at other options, for example, hiring more people. And I know at some point, Mr. Condon will say, "Well, it's cheaper to have overtime than it is to hire more people." The problem is, a tired officer is an officer at risk. It is a very complex job now out in the streets of Brockton, and I don't want someone to be working 20 hours. They went to court for a few hours, then they came in from 4:00 to 12:00, and then depending upon their, their seniority, they're held over on the midnight to 8:00 shift. I don't want something to happen to an officer. So, enough for tonight, but I hope my colleagues will be fully prepared to ask some real probing questions during the FY 2018 budget process, because this issue, I really think, needs a thorough vetting before the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ineri.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President. And Chief, I, I just want to, I'm going to just dittle everything that the Counselor at large just said, because I, I totally believe that, uh, we need to take a hard, hard look at, at what we're doing and how we're, how we're spending the monies and how we're spending overtime in that department and what we need to do to, to progress in a different type of way. I, I do want to just pick up on the heels of my, um, counsel from what, two, um, Counselor Monahan regards to having walking, uh, patrols back, and, and I'm going to put out that I want walking patrols back in Campello, because when I ask that question, the mayor always says, "Well, you keep taking my overtime away." Well, I'm giving it to you. Now, I'm asking for it, and, and I, and I mean that wholeheartedly. And I also want to make sure that traffic patrols are out there doing what they should be doing as well, and I hear they haven't been. So, uh, there's a little work we've got to do here. I'm going to stand and, stand tall and, and give you this before you this evening, but in, in essence, I, I feel the same way. We definitely got to start to take a different, different look in how we, how we get through and, and what we have to do to this, this department in regards to overtime. But, you have my support with it, but I want your support on those other items as well. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief, I just want to say, uh, you know, I respect what you do. I know that under this administration, there's been many requests for overtime. In fact, there was a request made that we granted, and you weren't the chief, it was a different individual relative to putting a code enforcement officer back on the street. And a promise was made, and it didn't get fulfilled. So, again, you come here as the chief, and we respect you, but we are really trying to say we'd like to see some walking beats, and I, you-
I understand.
Financially, your hands are restrained at some time, but we really need to work together in a collaborative approach.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Stedenski.
You might ask a question? I know I don't do it often.
By all means, Counselor.
Chief.
Former police chief, Stedenski, go ahead.
Is, is overtime the only way we can have a breed officer downtown, et cetera?
Well, it's pay-through overtime.
Yeah.
If we had adequate staffing, we could put somebody down there, assign them, but-
Okay. Can you tell them, tell me, what's causing the staffing problem? You have about 180 officers. Let's, let's subtract 10 for injured on duty. So, let's make it 170. I, I don't, I, I'm kind of miffed for that.
It started out, um, beginning of July due to vacation times and an exam year. Many people took time off. Later, as early in July, throughout the country, police officers became targets. As a result of that, we added four additional patrolmen to every shift so we could guarantee two responders to every call, to see what was going on there, if they weren't needed to leave. But officer safety was paramount, and that came at a cost.
No, that's understood, no problem there. I mean, the big thing is, is management, but right through you, you've got your captains. You've got your lieutenants. Do you have a bureau? Is, is there a bureau for the patrol division? A bureau head?
Operations Bureau.
Who's, who's the bureau head?
Captain Williamson.
Okay. Who's the bureau head for the administrative side?
Captain Halasy.
Okay. The other captains? How have you got them assigned, if I can ask?
Captain De Berry is traffic commissioner. Captain, um, Gomes is the commanding officer of the day shift. Captain Sago is currently, um, injured on duty pending retirement, and Captain McCabe is ETDs and restraining orders.
All right, well, I, I, you're appreciated, you're appreciated of me. I haven't bothered you with any calls, uh, but there are some, some items I'd like to see cleaned up, and I'll explain that to you in private.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Borogad.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief, for being here this, tonight. I have two questions. I find, you know, you're asking for the overtime, and I've called repeatedly about concerns because, again, like many of my colleagues, we're looking forward to having more strong , um, code enforcement. And I have a couple of officers that have been really great to me, and yet, if I call and they're not there, there's never someone saying, "Can I assist you?" And, you know, I mean, I had to make seven phone calls before I finally got the officer that I wished to speak to. Fortunately, that officer came through with a great report that I had to bring to the law department. But my other concern is, more than once, we've asked, um, once here in City Council, we asked for the crime analyst, and instead, we had Captain Halasy. I'm hoping you still have the crime analyst. This young woman really impressed me. She would be on the staff for what, over a year now? She just, yes. And then, we were hoping, I'm involved with the Downtown Brockton Association because Downtown Brockton is Ward 2 and Ward 5, and we're trying to get businesses downtown, and there's more residents coming downtown, and many individuals expressed an interest in hearing from the crime analyst. And yet, at a last meeting that we were hoping to have her come, we were told at the last minute she was unavailable. We'd, we'd really like to hear from this individual and her analy- analysts, you know, and results on, uh, what she's seen and how we can go forward with, you know, again, seeing where the money can be spent with more, just like my colleagues, I want to see more for patrols. And, you know, one of, actually, your offices was surprised that I was walking from one end of Ward 5 to the other. And, I mean, I feel safe, but I believe that people feel better when they see, whether it's a motorcycle cop, a bicycle cop, or an individual, you know, police officer walking and communicating. I've heard through other, in, you know, reports that in other communities, that that makes crime go down, because people feel more secure, there's more interaction, and it seems, I guess, when there's more neighborly interaction, there's less crime. So, I'm hoping that, um, like my colleagues expressed this evening, that we're going to see a more, um, how would I say it, involved, um, future with the, um, police in the, in the city. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Rodriguez, followed by Counselor Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President, actually. Chief, welcome.
Good evening.
I just want to make sure that the message doesn't leave this chamber, um, because we're questioning the issues of overtime, we want to make sure that it doesn't get, it doesn't get reflected on the work that the men and women of the Brockton, you know, PD actually does on a day-to-day basis. You know, it's our job and function in this body to question things, because when we leave here, we get bombarded with phone calls, and I believe what Counselor, uh, Farwell was doing in terms of adding all the overtime expenditure, I think he said 1,000 something, something, but I think he meant to say 1,000,000 something, something. We have spent over a million dollars in police overtime in this city. Over a million dollars. Uh, I'm not against police overtime, because there's instances where you do need overtime, but we gotta do something. I mean, over a million dollars. I mean, last year, you asked for a few, and you got some, you got basically everything you asked for plus, and here you are again with about a, a little over a month left asking for some more. We gotta be a little more, a little more frugal in the city in the sense to be able to, I mean, we're running into issues where we're closing classrooms because we can't afford to pay teachers, we, we're closing schools because we can't afford to make ends meet, yet for some odd reason, it seems that we find monies to spend on over a million dollars in police overtime. Not again, not that they don't deserve the, what they get paid, but I think we need to be a little more, a little smarter about doing things, and I can't imagine that a million-plus dollars, we couldn't turn around and maybe perhaps cut half of what we're spending and put that into more boots-on-the-ground, because I, I agree with Counselor Farwell in terms of, and I know some folks who are in the police department, they're, some of them are dead tired in the sense because of what the, the hours that they're forced to work, and that cannot make our communities any safer. So, I think, and I agree with them, that we know we need to seriously sit down, I don't know if it, if it's to put together a commission to look into this stunt, into this thing, but we need to seriously get, get hold of this overtime stuff, because it's out of control. It's out of control, and it's frightening the daylights out of a lot of our residents, ourselves, and, and some folks within this commu-, within this building itself. I mean, people are concerned about that. But I wanted to ask you if you know, how do we compare overtime-wise in terms of expenditures with the other communities? And I'm not talking about Boston, or Worcester, Springfield, more like the New Bedfords, the Lawrencees, the Linds, and the communities that are of, of our size. How are they spending their overtime monies in comparison to Brockton?
I don't have that answer. I tried to look up their budgets and, and pick that out, but I didn't, I don't have that available tonight.
But is this a, is this a common thing, that these communities of 100,000 people or so spend about a million dollars in police overtime?
I would guess yes.
You'd guess yes?
I know Lawrence's appropriation on the, yeah, EOPS grant was $880,000, so, um, so my guess is there in the million-dollar range also.
Let me ask you something. What can you do as a police chief to, to somehow look at overtime and, and basically look into controlling overtime spending?
In the past, a lot of our overtime was generally detective work and investigations. This past year, we've seen it be patrol and covering shift shortages so we can put the adequate number of people on the road to keep everyone safe. You know, more bodies is the answer, but that takes time. We're in the process now of hiring 15, we're doing background checks, and that'll stop the bleeding, but as we put on, people retire, so it's, seems like we're always chasing our tail, but we're moving forward. Uh, we're, we're going in a good direction, it just takes time to get there.
You know, honestly, I don't, I don't mind, for instance, seeing the patrolmen, you know, and the guys who have been on the job five, six, 10 years or so, patrolling the streets. But when you look at the police overtime spending, you've got a lot of brass in that overtime, uh, area. And that's what kind of bothers a lot of people in the community because you look at, when the newspapers comes out and prints out a, uh, you know, the earners in the community and you see all this brass, you know, making a ton of overtime money, and these aren't funds that are actually going for street patrolling. You know, so if it's actually, i- if you're seeing patrolmen patrolling, I think the community feels a little, a little more alleviated in the sense knowing that, yes, the overtime money is actually going onto the streets where in fact, you're looking at captains, lieutenants that aren't really in the street, but yet somehow utilizing a great deal of the overtime money.
It's a contractual issue for fair and equitable distribution of overtime between the, the patrolmen and the superior officers. So you, like, say if, uh, on a, um, a four-to-twelve shift, for instance, a sergeant is gonna create overtime, there's an opening. So sergeant, lieutenant, and captain is eligible for that. And whoever's low hours is gonna get it, and usually it's the captain who's the highest paid. And that's, I mean, the contractual language needs to change.
Well, how do we change it?
Bargain.
Yeah, but who's, who's sitting around in the bargaining? You guys do.
Right, we're doing that now.
So it, doesn't that make sense to somehow look into that and say, hey, how can we make this a little more, a little more equitable for the community? Because, I mean, I hear the mayor saying the other day that we now have more police officers than we've had in quite some time, but yet some-
We're going to, yes.
Huh?
We're going to, yes.
Yeah, but yet, we're spending also a lot more in OT than we did before. So it's not really kind of resolving the overtime issue as well as it should.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Thanks, Counsel. Um, just, just point of information, the figure that Counsel Farwell should have mentioned was 1,590,652 dollars, and that figure doesn't include the two grants. Counsel Barnes.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. So, um, just to kind of follow up on something that Counsel Borogad said, so the crime analyst, I actually, I have my budget book from last year, so, and in here, I guess I put in here the report from the crime analyst at the time. Um, I believe this was back in June, uh, 2016. Has there been another one since this?
Another report?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I, I don't know what you have there.
Well, when the, when the crime analyst came on, uh, we were given this report that kind of explains or gives a little dossier of, um, I guess, some of the crimes that were going on or some of the things that were happening.
Does that daily? She does one of those every day.
Real time? Okay. So I don't know if my other colleagues received any others since this, but I guess, were there any others that we could have been privy to before now? That we may be able to have to show some of the, or even have like a compare and contrast, uh, report from last year to this year?
We could ask her to, to do an overview of everything and just add up everything and give percentage of increases and decreases. I don't, I don't see exactly what you have there, but it, it looks like the Daily Bulletin.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is what I got from, this is what I assumed to have gotten from the crime analyst at the time, when we had asked for, um, I guess, not evidence of the work that, that that person was doing, but just kind of what were the things were being, um, studied or, or, you know, things that were in analysis. So I, I guess I'm asking, can we maybe get more of these, these kinds of reports? If they're daily intelligence reports, can we get more of them? Maybe once a quarter, uh, at least?
It's all, it's, it's, there's just sensitive information in there. Some of them have sensitive information.
Yeah, this one, yeah, it's pretty sensitive.
Counsel, why don't we respectfully, and you can redact the sensitive information, but why don't we request it monthly?
Okay, monthly's fine, I can, I just didn't want to be too annoying on that, but okay, I-
Respectfully, that'd be, that'd be good, have it once a month.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Because we only meet, as a city council, we meet twice a month, so that'd be great.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, so with that too, is the crime analyst paid out of overtime funds or is that person paid out of, um, full-time?
She's in the budget, is a full-time position.
Okay, I, I don't know if I, I didn't really see that in here, but I just wanted to make, to see if that person was paid in the overtime fund. Now, with regard to what Counsel Farwell, um, put out, and I'm glad that he was able to get that information for the 1.59 million dollars and some change. And going back, looking at the police overtime requested, it was only 1.1 million. The mayor requested 1 million and, you know, 20,000 or so, but you received 750, correct?
Yes.
So this time, from that, from that year to now, we've even gone over what you requested in the beginning of budget season, uh, season of last year by 400 and something thousand, almost a half a million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. So with, as Counsel Rodriguez said, with, you know, less than a month to go really, two, two weeks for the evaluation and, you know, some kind of, um, I, I guess, coming together and releasing of the funds. Do you think that the department would be able to get over on maybe 100,000 or 150,000? Because I, I mean, I honestly, I, in all good faith, and I'm not against the police and I'm not against, you know, folks not having overtime or whatever, whatever's going on. It, I, I just echo what my colleagues are saying, I just find it mind-boggling that our city can go through a, almost a million and three-quarters dollars, like that, that's a lot of money. Some departments aren't even, the whole departments aren't funded for that amount of money, and that's just one budget item for one department in one city. And it's a lot. And with the whole, with, with just a month to go, to ask for another quarter of a million dollars? I mean, if, if we're looking at round numbers, I mean, we can make it cute and say 250,000, but that's a quarter of a million dollars when more than 1.5 million has been spent already. That's a lot, that's almost 2 million dollars in one line item. That's a lot. And, and I, again, I think we really do need to vet this and kind of figure out, and like you said, something about, you know, the, the new, uh, officers that are coming on, um, it is a way to kind of stop the bleeding, and that's a good way, I, I think that was a good way that you put that because this particular line item, the department is hemorrhaging money out of this line item. And we, this, there's gotta be a way to fix that. And, and I think healthy, candid discussion on exactly where it's going, how it's being spent, um, some of the, the, maybe even some of the culture in the department needs to change. Because in speaking with some of my police officer friends, some of them say that if they ask for time off, they don't think they're gonna be, they're not gonna get it, so they just call in sick. And then that automatically generates like this overtime and all this other stuff. We, something's wrong there, too. Something's wrong with that kind of thinking, like, I'm not gonna be able to get my time off, even if I do it the right way and ask for it, so I'm just gonna take off. That's where, this, that, that's what's happening here. And we're all feeling the brunt of it. So I guess I'm saying, is this something that you can maybe get over on for the next month with 100, maybe 150,000?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, can I make an amendment to reduce it to 150,000?
If that happens, there'll be drastic reductions in service for the city.
But 250,000 dollars in a month of services? A month of walking beats? Or, I mean, that's, I, I, I don't, I just, I guess I just don't understand.
I can't anticipate where the future is gonna bring me, and I won't have time to come back and get more if I need it. So I, I have to ask for what I'm asking for now. And I'm not, it's, again, it's a transfer of funds that are already there from salaries. I realize that the council feels that's the same sometimes, but it's money I have in the budget now.
Okay.
Counsel Lally, are you done, Counsel Barnes, for, for the moment?
Apparently.
You don't have to be if you don't want to be.
No, no, I am. Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel Lally.
All right, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, I just want to start by, you know, by thanking you and, and your officers for the work that you do. It's not an easy job, um, especially this part. Um, I, I did, I did just check, I'm not going to really touch too much on it, I did just check, uh, online, according to the Lawrence Journal, uh, they don't have the 2017, uh, fiscal year '17 numbers up, but, uh, in fiscal year 2016, they spent a little less than 1 million dollars on overtime. Um, my two things that I wanna, I wanted to bring up were, you know, I wanted to echo some of the counselors, uh, had, you know, concerns about code enforcement and continuing, uh, continuing to make sure people stayed within the law and within the boundaries on, on that. I think that's very important for us to, us to continue and us to really double down on. Uh, and like Counsel Ian Eary asked about, you know, uh, more walking beats in Campello, uh, I would like to echo that for Montello and, you know, part of the village if possible. Because that's, you know, that's an area that could, you know, uh, the people would really appreciate the extra presence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Cruz followed by Counsel Farwell.
Thank you. Chief, thanks for being here. Um, maybe I'm seeing this a little differently, but, so this is 250,000 dollars from your current personal services budget-
Yes.
-that would be taken by, if some of these officers that are being vetted right now, I assume they'll be appointed and go to the academy soon.
Yes.
But that'll be into the next fiscal year, I assume.
Yes.
So this is 250,000 dollars that, if that whole process was going a little earlier and taking, moving faster, would be towards, towards those officers, let's say.
Yes.
250,000 dollars, how many officers with benefits and, and the equipment would that be taken, would that be for a year?
Three.
Probably four?
Four-ish.
Four. And that 250,000 dollars in overtime, that those four, trained and ready and put on the job, would not be able to handle all of what you'll use this overtime money for, I assume.
That's correct.
So it, it, we use a big amount in the police and fire because we have less people and we, we use overtime to cover those, those, uh, those jobs, correct?
Yes.
And in fact, I hear at least four, and I agree with them, requests for walking beats. It's additional work, it's, it's adding people to the street, correct?
Yes.
And that money has to come from somewhere. And if we use most, if we were to take that million and a half that we've spent on overtime, be what, do you think, uh, probably 17, 18 officers? At, at entry level?
In that neighborhood, yes.
And that wouldn't, as full-time employees, do you think they would cover two-thirds of what you use for overtime, a half?
Probably not.
Probably not. So the, the overtime budgets that we use for police and fire are really very pennywise, uh, pennywise spent. They're, they're very, you, we get a big value for that as opposed to adding people with benefits, retirement, the whole thing. And of course, those, those are entry-level prices. We're talking about as those officers are on the department, they, uh, those numbers go up, correct?
Yes.
So I just, it, it seems to me it's the right way to do it, to a point, you do get a point, and I agree with Counsel Farwell, I don't want anybody out there that's, that's overworked, but, uh, do you feel that's happening?
We'll, we'll reach a point where that potentially could happen, yes, and we have a lot of demands on our offices. And as you said, they do a hard job.
If you think an officer has spent too much time, is there a limit by con-
16 hours.
16 hours is the most they can spend on a, you know, in a day?
Right. Without a break. They'd have to take an eight-hour stop.
Take an eight-hour break. So there is a, a, and do you think that's too much, or?
I mean, if you're doing it every day, it's too much, but, um, you know, it's a job that needs to be done.
So there is a tipping point of where we need to look at, and you are, how many, how many officers are we looking at adding?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and which would, should bring us up to-
200.
To 200, which would be the highest we've been in, in, at least in, since I've been, been around. I mean, I, I think we haven't been over, let us Chief Stedensky his point of information.
Prior to prior 1989, we were at 200.
Prior to '89, that's, that's pretty good. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Cruz, are there any other councils before we go to follow-ups? Any councils that didn't ask any questions? Counsel Farwell, follow-up.
Just to close out, I think, unfortunately, in politics, things get spun around 180 degrees away from what they're intended to be. The issue should never be whether we appreciate the men and women of the police department. The issue is how do we effectively manage limited financial resources in this city and get maximum effective use out of them? And I just see, having come from the police department, I see captains working a sergeant shift, I get an email saying, well, one of the reasons why we're spending a lot of overtime is because we had promotional exams and we had to backfill positions because so many people were off. If we have lost that degree of management control, folks, we've got a problem. They have promotional exams in the fire department, and you don't see Chief Williams coming in here and asking for all sorts of overtime. So I just think it's time to call the proverbial timeout and have all of us take a hard look at this, find out what we can do so that we get maximum use out of very limited financial resources. That's all this is, and I certainly hope the public and my colleagues understand that's where I'm coming from. So I appreciate your indulgence on this issue.
Any other councils have questions? Counsel Barnes.
I have a question, I just wanted to make my motion. I kind of put it out there in a statement kind of form, but how, how would I actually do that?
You can make a motion to modify.
Okay, um, well, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to, um, modify number 60, the appropriation of 250,000 dollars to overtime to the police to 150,000.
Second.
So motion on the floor is properly seconded to, to modify it, as stated by Counsel Large Barnes and, uh, seconded by Counsel Large Rodriguez. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if you could kindly read the role relative to this amendment motion?
Azak.
No.
Byrne.
Yes.
Borogad.
No.
Cruz.
No.
Ian Eary.
No.
Farwell.
No.
Lally.
No.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedensky.
No.
No.
Counselors, the, uh, the amendment made does not prevail, thus we go back to the fact that we're acting on a suspension rule on number 60, the appropriation request of 250,000. Mr. Clerk, if you could kindly read the role on that matter?
Azak.
Yes.
Byrne. No.
Borogad.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ian Eary.
Yes.
Farwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Bonahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
No.
Stedensky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Appropriation hereby passes, counselors.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
The dean, we'll go to the dean, dean of the council, Counsel Ian Eary.
I'm just gonna move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail in the order of 60.
Motion made properly seconded reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Motion for reconsideration does not prevail. Chief, thank you. Uh, counselors, we're gonna go back now to agenda items seven through 10 that were postponed. Everyone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, instead of having the clerk read them, they've already been read. Is there anyone here, uh, in the chamber for Mass Electric Company or National Grid? None. Counselors, I'm gonna entertain a motion for number seven to postpone it to the next finance meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded postpone number seven to the next finance meeting. All in favor? All opposed? It carries. I'm sorry, no, the next city council meeting. I'm sorry, next city council meeting, I misspoke. Postpone to the next, we'll modify that, counselors? Postpone to the next city council. All in favor? All opposed? Postponed. Well, I didn't know if, uh, like, they're not, they weren't all, we can, let's, let's, anyone here from Verizon? Anyone here from Verizon? No one's here from National Grid, no one's here from Mass Electric. Counselors, if we could-
Make a motion to postpone eight, nine, and 10 till the next city council.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded to postpone-
Mr. Chairman?
Eight, nine, and-
Counselor.
Mr. President, just, just on the motion, because we're getting backed up towards the end of the year and with budgets and, and a number of other issues, are these basically, my first term in the council, are they basically routine? Or is, is there a reason why these could not be approved tonight?
Yeah, I wouldn't postpone, I mean, I would, as the president, I wouldn't allow it. I've been on the council 12 years, the utility companies always appear before us. Fact that they're not here tonight, the matter should be postponed.
All right, thank you.
Eight, nine, and 10 are postponed to the next city council meeting. All in favor? All opposed? It carries. Postpone to the next city council meeting. Thus, counselors, we go back to 61 on the agenda, and I'm gonna have to entertain a motion relative to that because it's attributed to the same agenda items we just postponed.
So moved.
61, 62, 63-
And 64.
64.
Yep.
And 64?
Mm-hmm.
Postponed, uh, to the next city council.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? 61, 62, 63, 64 are postponed to the next city council meeting. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a few late files.
We have a communication from the building department requesting reauthorization of revolving funds for fiscal '18 revolving demolition account.
It's gonna be referred to the finance committee.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Excepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That also is excepted and placed on file.
We have an order that the city council authorizes a re-establishment of revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 for the sole purpose of helping to fund the cost in connection with the demolition of buildings in the city of Brockton.
Refer to the finance committee. Uh, counselors, a couple of points of information if we could. I just want to let you know that on Friday night, Counsel Borogad was there, I attended a meeting at the Dover Street Art Gallery on behalf of the city council. I presented a citation to Lynn Smith, we all know Lynn, uh, she's a real civic activist and she's done a lot, uh, in the city of Brockton, so just want to let you know that I did that as your president. And then also, counselors, and it kind of piggybacks on what we just talked about relative to vetting out and making sure that the budget is appropriated. Again, remember, the city of Brockton is just a business, 440 million dollar business, the city of Brockton. So, um, we're gonna be having budget hearings upcoming. Uh, Mayor Coppener has indicated to me that the books will be received on June 2nd, which is a Friday. Thus, I'm gonna call budget hearings Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, June 7th, June 8th, June 9th. It's gonna give us from the 2nd through the 7th to vet it out and research it and spend some time. Also, Council Large Bonds has indicated that there's a, a nice probability that, uh, our Congressman Stephen Lynch will join us here in the chamber on Friday, June 9th, when we do the school budget, uh, which is nice, and thank you for that, councillor. Uh, so 7, 8, 9 will be budget, and then we'll be back on the 12th, which will be full city council to address and hopefully ratify the budget at that time. Council Bonds?
Uh, yes, just a moment of personal privilege if I may.
Yes, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So after a year of planning and working things out and getting folks, uh, excited about serving on the Brockton's Commission on Women's Issues, we are finally going to be swearing in, uh, 10 members. There were originally 11 members. Unfortunately, uh, one of the members, my friend Lizetta Johnson, she passed away, um, a few weeks ago. However, she will be sworn in posthumously, um, but there will be 10 women eager to start to serve and to address the issues of women in the city of Brockton. It's, uh, it's scheduled right now for Wednesday, the 7th, at around 6:30. We're still working out kind of a place, but it will be here in City Hall. Um, we expect the media to be there, we invite, um, all the, any resident that wants to come. Um, it will be kind of like an open, public meeting-ish kind of thing, where you can meet the women, um, suggest some issues you'd like them to address, and, and also just to get familiar with one of your newest commissions in the city of Brockton. So I want to thank the, um, the 11 women who agreed to serve on this, thank my count, my, uh, colleagues on the council for, um, allowing us to do this. I thank the mayor's office, Andrea Burton, um, and the mayor for, you know, allowing this, this really huge, huge undertaking to, to go forward. So, um, just want to invite everybody to that, June 7th, 6:30.
Thank you, councillor. Council Falwell?
Just a moment of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, I'd like to mention the passing of Kathleen Snellgrove, with whom many of us worked at the police department for many years. She was a civilian telephone operator and then worked as a clerk in the BCI, and she passed away, and, uh, she was a wonderful person. So I, I would just like to acknowledge that. Uh, the other issue is, the Public Safety Committee will meet at 6:00 PM, uh, prior to next week's FinCom meeting on Tuesday, the 30th. So members of the Public Safety Committee hopefully will breeze through that, uh, well in advance of the 7:00 PM FinCom. But, uh, 6 o'clock on the 30th for Public Safety.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, Council Rodriguez, followed by Council Azak.[1534.13]